Please be seated. I've got a message for... Please can I ask you to switch off your mobile phones to silent? It is with great sadness, Emma Hampton. Emma, Visser, and was thirty-six years old, and had been employed for four years. Our thoughts are with Emma's family and friends. Would members please join me in a minute's silence as a mark of respect? Before we seat ourselves again, could I please wish councillor Nile Hardree's happy birthday from the chamber? Thank you. Okay, thank you. Everyone be seated. I have apologies of absence received from councillors Berry, Brown, B Clark, Evans, Geoffrey, Kay, Levann, Nightingale, and Carl Quarterman. Is there any other absences?
Councillors Taylor and Pugh, please, Mr Mayor, thank you. Oh, and councillor Thompson as well, just in.
Thank you. Thank you. If there are any declarations of interest on the meeting. Can I move on to item three? Can I have a proposal and seconda for the minutes of the meeting held on the thirty-first of July, twenty twenty-five? Can members please note the attendance matrix from the last meeting? Move on to item five, which is announcements from the mayor, the leader of the council or cabinet members. If members are not aware already, the leader, councillor Brown, will not be with in attendance today due to a recent loss of his mother. Can we pass our condolences to him and his family? I would like to thank everyone involved in organising the mayor's civic service last Sunday, both at the council and at St Somsby. I would also like to thank the deputy lieutenant, Lieutenant, Trevor Watson, the mayors and councillors, and the British Legion who attended the service. I appreciate their support. Are there any announcements from the leader?
Deputy, as Neil reminds me. I'm extremely proud that our council has launched a programme which will help young people with special educational needs take their first steps in future careers. We will be a host employer and provide nine internships due to page eight to twenty-four, eighteen to twenty-four, who have an EHCP. Nine young people have been offered placements across a range of services, and the experience they gain will hopefully put them in a strong position to pursue successful careers in future. I'd like to thank those who were given their time and skills to support these young people during their time at the council. I'm sure everyone will be pleased to see Redcar's Boot in Lake back to its best once again. The lake is a hundred years old and had suffered significant cracking, which took specialists to work to repair, but it is now looking fantastic again as the centrepiece of the development in Cotham. We will celebrate its reopening at a public event this Saturday, where the public are invited to experience a taste of seaside nostalgia with live entertainment and displays. Major regeneration work has been happening for the past few years in Loftus, but the opening of two major projects means that work is nearing completion. The historic United Reformed Church, a building dating back to nineteen oh six, has been transformed into a brand-new Temperance Square Training Hub and has been completed. We all hope the work will make Loftus more attractive and a vibrant town, and I would like to thank those who've worked hard to make the transformation a success. Please watch out for a taste of Redcar in Cleveland, which highlights and supports a wide range of hospitality venues across our borough. I've seen different places signing up every week, and the latest campaign will run from the fifth to the sixteenth of November, offering exclusive deals for residents. It's worked brilliantly in the past, giving residents a bargain and businesses a boost at this quieter time of year. Finally, we're heading into autumn, and I'd like to finish with a worthy mention of Between the Tides, which brought a fantastic weekend for families to Kirkleatham at the end of August. The free event was a huge success once again, and it was fantastic to see so many residents and visitors enjoying quality events brought together by the council. Thank you.
Are there any announcements from cabinet members? And no questions have been received from the public. So we move on to item eight, to consider and agree reports from the cabinets. The first one is a financial update, quarter one, twenty-five, twenty-six.
Thank you. So hello, welcome to the quarter one financial update. You'll be aware that these don't always come to full council, but the reason that it's for full council decision today is because there are a couple of small items of additional borrowing that are mentioned in the report. So I'm only going to give a broad picture because obviously this has been through the resource scrutiny process previously. But in essence, at quarter one, the financial report says, and I will talk about the full report, that the council's projecting a two-point-seven million pound overspend, which is obviously concerning, but is a much improved position on this time last year, when we were predicting about a six-and-a-half million pound overspend. The work of the next few months is to try and mitigate the impact of that overspend and indeed drive down costs where possible. It could leave us in a position where we need to use reserves by the year end, which would leave us with very few reserves left in the bank, to be quite frank with this. So we do need to look, if possible, for in-year solutions where we can find them. I think in a broad sense, members will be cognizant of a couple of things on the horizon for the council which could improve our trajectory moving forward, but unfortunately will not improve it this financial year. So fair funding from the government is a good thing. Councils like Redcar and Cleveland could seek to benefit or should benefit from fair funding changes, but the likelihood of us benefiting this financial year is very slim. So we think that potentially we could be four million pounds a year better off by next financial year. That doesn't affect the budget position that I've mentioned this financial year, which we do need to address where possible. Similarly, on the horizons, we have Tees Work, which again is a wonderful thing. But again, the impact is more likely to be felt in future financial years rather than this financial year, because anything that's in the bank already from this financial year, we've accounted for. Even though we could be nine million pounds better off in future years, we have to make tough decisions potentially this year. In very, very quick parlance, adults and children have overspent, the other directorates are about balanced. That is the broad position. We know this is largely due to cost pressures, particularly due to demand for things like children's social care, but also increased demand for residential care in the adults' portfolio as well as hospitals trying to move people out of hospitals into local facilities, which does come with an impact for the council. So in essence, the financial report is as read. The two items that are really, the whole report's here for full council, but the two items that require a full council decision and not just a cabinet decision are to do with the capital programme. So you'll note that there's about naught-point-three million pounds additional in the capital programme that's being asked for, and this is to fund new IT expenditure. In particular, these are projects to help with home-to-school transport and route optimisation, and also some smaller projects to help with surveying software, and an additional naught-point-one-three million pounds for Loftus' future High Street due to inflationary pressures within that scheme. So I move the report and invite questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Captain Massey. Can I ask someone to move and second report, please? Well, you've moved it second of, sorry, about a second of, second it, thank you. And does anyone wish to speak?
Thanks, Mr Mayor. And thank you, councillor Massey, for your report, as always. It all seems a little bit precarious. I'm sure no one envisages your job. I've only got two, just two small points really. Page fourteen, you say the utility costs are increasing. So I'm just wondering about the business case for all of the energy-saving measures, solar panels, et cetera, which I assume were about saving us money. And secondly, on page nineteen, the capital programme, the town centre investment is showing a nine-million under-spend now. Now, I very clearly remember asking you about this at the last council meeting, when the underspend was six million. So I'm just concerned that it has changed by such an amount in such a short time. And should we be thinking about the capacity that we have by now to deliver such a complex programme? Thanks a lot.
Councillor Joy.
It's a sombre reading, isn't it? But I just wondered about the fair funding aspect of it. It was the Labour Party Conference last week in Liverpool, and I'm just wondering whether any representatives from either this authority or our neighbouring authorities had the chance to lobby government about expanding that or getting our fairer share since we've been disproportionately affected in this area as other areas have that are deprived for a number of years. Just wondered whether there was any progress on that.
Councillor Thompson.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I wonder if the cabinet member could expand on his understanding of what the benefits may be on the Fair Funding Formula review.
Councillor Massey, no more questions.
So thank you for the questions and for paying attention. So in essence, in terms of the energy forecast, I do recognise that the picture has changed an awful lot since we first went down some of these roads. We did lead the way as a council in terms of things like solar power or particularly in reducing the energy costs through insulation and other schemes. My portfolio, although obviously the financial elements do, but I'm happy to take that one away and certainly try and find a more cogent and clear response to it than I can possibly give you at this point in time. In terms of the capital variance, I do think I answered the previous question that you asked by saying, keep an eye on it. You obviously have a councillor co, which is good. I think there's two things to say about this. Obviously, as councillors, particularly as we have somewhat of a half-life as councillors and we exist for four-year blocks, that we want to see the money that this council brings in, whether it's through grant funding, through asset sales or through borrowing, out of the door and spent to benefit our communities. The challenge is that obviously we have a fine and due to that, you occasionally get slippages. But the important thing to note, although the slippages are concerning, the important thing to note is that there's no loss of funding. It tends to be a reprofiling in the future years. So in essence, this is not the council saying we will not spend this amount of money. This is the council saying we will not spend this amount of money this financial year. It could potentially slip into the next financial year. But I do note the point is very well made, that the slippage has increased from previous reports. Indeed, it's a very small team. Our regeneration, our growth team is very small. It's a small number of kind of place officers and officials. But I would be happy to take that up with the cabinet member and the director, who can give you a more thorough response than I. I'm not concerned from a financial point of view because we'll spend the money, but I could understand why someone in a community would be concerned that the money isn't being spent as quickly as we'd like to see it in our communities. So I do get the question. In terms of fair funding, I can't speak about people at Labour Party Conference. I did not, I've not been to Labour Party Conference for many, many years. I know, as previously had conversations, certainly with the local members of parliament that represent Redcar in Cleveland, about, hopefully, but they don't control everything, accelerating the pace of fair funding. Because I think what we were told as a council or councils demographically like us was that fair funding was going to be something that did redress that balance between, largely speaking, north and south, largely speaking, more deprived and more affluent. And I still think that's going to take place. It's just not going to take place as quickly as we may be hoped. And that's the challenge for the council that I referenced earlier. Fair funding from this government, and I'm being as apolitical as humanly possible, will benefit this council. However, we would have liked to have benefited the council this year. It's going to benefit us next year, but that's why I prefix the whole report by saying there may be still some tough decisions that we have to make in year at the start of next year, in essence. And that also kind of hopefully answers partly councillor Thompson's succinct question about the benefits of this. But in essence, I think anyone who's been here a long time, myself and councillor Thompson are certainly two of the ones who have been here for a small or large amount of time. We've noticed that the funding that we get from central government as a local authority has diminished greatly. So when I first became a councillor in twenty-eleven, things like the Revenue Support Grant were huge. Income sounds incorrect, but there were huge financial benefits for councils like ours, recognising that the impact of business rates for a council like ours and council tax for a council like ours is completely different to the leafy south, where there are potentially more businesses and certainly more houses of higher council tax bands. Fair funding seeks to redress that. And hopefully, the idea of a fair funding review is that the country should spread its wealth and areas like Redcar and Cleveland should not be disadvantaged by having smaller housing stock bases, lower council tax levels, or broadly speaking, smaller businesses. Obviously, in the past, we had large-scale businesses. Hopefully, in the future, we will again. But largely speaking, our business rates can't grow exponentially without a wider project like Tees Work. We can't invite in something as a council necessarily that's going to replace the steelworks, but certainly the governments or previous governments and current governments can do that. So what we can do on our own is continue to work on those kind of schemes with Tees Works. What we can do with the government is to try and, which I know is taking place, encourage investment in this area to help grow our business rate and encourage a reset, if not a reform of the system, so that the business rate system is fairer for this council. And so, very crucially, as councillor Nightingale has mentioned for many years, he's not here, but has mentioned, the council tax system is grossly unfair, fully in this country, and particularly unfair to councils and residents like ours. So I hope that helps. Sorry if I wobble.
Thank you, councillor Massey. Can we approve the update? Thank you. The next item is review of the shareholders' arrangements. And councillor Massey is proposing this.
Thank you. So this is quite a dry one, but for the readers of Local Government Lawyer, you will notice that the position that our local government lawyers believe exists around shareholders committees has changed. So we have a shareholders committee. I was briefly the chair of that committee, certainly when it's met, for the arms-length or external organisations that the council deals with and/or owns in the large part of the latter. The recommendations, because of legal advice, are that the executive should be in control of the shareholders committee moving forward. Because in essence, what we've got at the moment is a cross-party shareholders committee, but the legal advice suggests that that is not what we should have. And actually, shareholder functions are a subsection of cabinet functions and executive functions. So basically, the Local Government Act of two thousand says that this should be the cabinet's, under the cabinet's control. What I think we've tried to do as a cabinet is recognise the fact that, A, we're a minority administration, and B, that even our cabinet that we have now does have other people around the table who are not cabinet members. So rather than seeing this future executive shareholding committee as solely a closed shop with only cabinet members in, we want to form it as a subcommittee of the cabinet, which effectively still invites the chairs of scrutiny, so that in essence, people can hear, see and deliberate about what the changes, policies. The shareholder committee is very, very rarely met, so that we have, I'll be perfectly frank. I think I've had one meeting of it. But just in case it's needed for any of the council's groups in the future, the suggestion is to establish an executive shareholders committee to replace the existing member shareholders committee. Thank you. I move that.
Thank you, councillor Massey. Could I have a seconda, please? Thank you. Does anyone wish to speak? If not, then can we move to accept the review? Item nine, to receive reports from portfolio holders. We have one report from a cabinet member for children. This is a question-and-answer session, councillors.
Thanks. Okay. The true measure of any society can be found in how it treats its most vulnerable members. I think that's a quote from Gandhi, although it's attributed to quite a few people, actually. But anyway, it's something that I all heartily agree with, and I'm sure that we can all empathise with the sentiment of that. For us in Redcar and Cleveland Borough Council, it's how we support the elderly through adult services and how we protect and nurture the next generation, our children. I think we should be judged on that. As corporate parents, we all hold that responsibility. That's why many of the issues in this report should be carefully considered by us all, appraised and scrutinised by every councillor. In the report, we've tried to cover much of the work done in children's, rather than present lots and lots of figures. Those are considered in depth at the two scrutiny committees. Even then, the report's thirty pages and over twelve thousand words. And it just scratches the surface of the wide array of work in the children's directorate. So I don't intend to go through the whole report, you'll be pleased to know. I'll assume that you've discharged your responsibilities as corporate parents ahead of it. You've been in Manchester all week. And so, if you've got any follow-up questions, please contact me later or ask in the chamber, either now or through council questions. I just don't seem to get many of these questions, and there's none again for children's, despite its importance. Firstly, I must point out, it's not really my report. It's been pulled together by our DCS, Danielle, with the help of the A Ds, Claire and John, and many other officer contributions. Although I believe I've played my part in shaping the overall strategy and the policies, and I've perused and slightly amended the final document. A year into a new government with a focus on children, we're currently facing considerable policy change. This summer, we had the Children's Wellbeing and Schools Act. It looks like there'll be a new SEND regulations following a white paper this autumn, and a couple more white papers are in the pipeline. So it'd be fair to say we face a period of flux here. Families and children are under pressure everywhere. But in places like Redcar and Cleveland, the problems are magnified. Rising child poverty, shortages of placements for children in our care, for foster care, and high-cost placements, leading to an increase in demand because other authorities are in the same position. So the market prices have risen. Massive increases in EHCP applications, education health care plan applications. Spiralling deficits in the school high-needs block. Shortages of special school placements. More SEND tribunals. Pressure on home-to-school transport. Shortage of social workers and other specialist staff. These are all linked, of course, linked to the social problems, all too evident in our borough. And there are additional post-COVID pressures. School attendance, increases in home schooling. The pressures on children in our care virtual school. As we fight to keep children safe, safe from exploitation. These are all national concerns. These are all national concerns. So to some extent, we in Redcar and Cleveland are ahead of the curve in developing policy to address the issues. With lots of strategies. Recently, Jane presented our school readiness and transition policy to the Strategic Education Board. That's a board that Claire sorted, so it's set up, and it's made of chief executives of the academies, a very influential group of people. I think Claire and I are the only board members who don't have an O B E, at least. They were very impressed, judging our approach as an exemplar, an approach they would promote elsewhere. In many policy areas, we feel similarly running ahead of the legislative requirements. Amanda's work on making school attenders everyone's business is another initiative when we're running ahead of the government policy. And whilst we're here, whilst we're here, I'd just like to mention Ursula and her work promoting auto-enrollment for free school meals, which has had a big impact on children, all children and from homes with benefits. A massive impact on their wellbeing and ability to learn. Another strategy, another strategy, is the government is rolling out, copying our approach. I've just lost a page of my notes, so that's why I'm stuttering a little bit. Anyway, it's here somewhere, I'll find it in a moment. Elsewhere, so we've strived in Redcar and Cleveland to maintain youth services in the borough. It's discretionary spending, but a really important aspect of safeguarding our children from all forms of exploitation. Again, a strategic approach, government are looking to replicate. Although there's certainly no room for complacency, I think we're ahead of the game strategically. Our budget is in bits, of course. We've just over four hundred children in our care. It's a concern. It's a concern that it's stubbornly high. But it's the high placements, high-cost placements, which are the main problem financially. Our revenue account budget is about four to five million pounds in deficit. But we've several children in placements which cost approaching a million pounds a year each. Andy's doing sterling work, seeking out placements locally, hatching plans to buy or rent properties, which will become our children, our own children's home. We've already made some progress in this regard. We've expanded Churchview, a facility widely praised by Ofsted. Called the Strategy Invest to Save, that's how we're selling it to Philwind Stanley, anyway. Children's service, children's services, if you just give me a moment, I've just lost a sheet of my note. I've got any notes here? I've lost a sheet. The last one there, hang on, I know that was two. Just a moment. Just a moment. I'll sort it out as we go along. Children's services is the biggest, most impactful thing we do as a council. It's the biggest, most impactful thing we do as a council. So I hope that you can find time to visit some of our services. I hope you can find time to visit some of our services. Visit your local family hub to see the front door on services overseen by Nicola. Arrange with Charlotte to call at the match, that's the multi-agency, agent children's hub at Daisy Lane in Ormsby. Or the South Bank Business Centre, which is the base for the Social Work Academy and the hub for our team of over 100 social workers. Mandy Davies serves a medal for managing that team, that's for certain. And I assume you all know Mandy, she's the senior social worker. An apology to those present, but for me, she's the authority's most important employee. Children's social care is the main business of this council. You'll all have been invited, it's been emailed to everybody, to the Practice Week next week at Inspire to Learn in Normanbe. There's a full programme, nine to five, Monday to Friday. I recommend you drop in for a session or two. It'll give you a feel for what goes on. And if you've timed it right, you might just get free lunch if it's worth having. Finally, I'd just like to thank all our hard-working staff. I've mentioned a few people, but there are so many others working hard every day, fighting a tsunami, I struggle with that word, of need in our borough. So let's all support them, and I welcome any questions. Thank you. Sorry for losing my notes there.
Thank you, councillors. Councillor Neil.
Yeah, I just have a couple of questions on this, specifically around SEND and some of the discretionary spending. We talk about it being one of our four key priorities, but it's seven bullet points. Has nothing in here about the transport changes which have had massive impacts on SEND families, especially those within Post 16. Some of the things that you noted in here, especially around child poverty, these changes have directly impacted. I know residents who've had to cut hours at work because of the changes that have been made, and there's been virtually no co-production of working with the individual families involved to see whether there was better value for money options. I know in my own experience, the council have been trying to state that the cost difference between my house and Thomas's mum's house, because we share custody of my child, is about 2,000 pounds difference. I talked to them about best value, and they said that the company that they use have not increased their prices. There is more than one taxi company here, and within my research, there's companies that will do it cheaper from the other address. So I would argue that there's deficiencies in this, although there is a lot of good work. But around SEND, there's just not a lot there, and there's not a lot of consideration for the impact that these changes have made, both Post 16 and for those under. I just want to know whether, you know, this is going to be looked at again, and that SEND is actually going to be made a priority, and not just limited to seven bullet points and loads of omissions about some key changes that have been made. Thank you.
Councillors.
Thanks for coming up. Okay, thanks for your question, because we have had issues with home-to-school transport. And the 16 to 18 home-to-school transport for SEND is discretionary spending. So a lot of authorities, well, it's okay shrugging your shoulders, but it's okay shrugging your shoulders, but a lot of authorities have just cut it altogether because it's discretionary spending, and we feel we should help. But the budget got out of control, and Vicky Smith's worked really hard and I've liaised with her about this. A year ago, we had a solution to 16 to 18 SEND transport, which was unsatisfactory and unworkable. And we've worked on that since for about six months, about a year ago to six months ago. And I think we've produced a fair and equitable set of criteria, actually. I mean, prior to that, we were paying, the local authority was funding. I mean, for example, if somebody finds a course at Sunderland, you know, and there's a similar course running at Redcar College, or at Ascunbrien in Kinsborough, or something like that, we won't pay for somebody to send the child to Sunderland. You know, got to go to the more local one. We're finding some parents were looking for SEND transport when they'd already got a motorability car based on the pick for the child with a special need. So we didn't think that that was equitable or reasonable. So there are a whole host of, a whole host of things that went into that, and there were a lot of meetings here. I don't know whether you attended any of those, but there were a lot of meetings here in relation to that. And I think we've got a really good system. In fact, the number of complaints about the system since we brought it in have been very, very few. I mean, I don't know of any rate, to be honest. I mean, I'd have to speak to Vicky Smith and see what complaints there have been, but very few complaints. And I think we've got a fair and equitable system in Post 16 transport. I mean, if you've got personal, you know, your own experiences, then, I mean, you probably need to take it up through then. As far as working with parents, you know, we try our best. I mean, at the centre of all our activities is the child, you know, making sure that we do the best we can for every child in our authority. These are our corporate children, or we're responsible for them even if they're not our corporate children. And, well, let me finish, and then I don't know whether you're allowed to come back or not. Or it needs to come back to me outside this meeting. We try to work, we talk about co-production, we try to work as much as we can with parents. So that's what we try to, but as far as the transport, which I think was the essence of your question, I think we've got a really good and fair system, which is saving money, but is being fair to all the children, and it's discretionary spending as well. So, you know, I don't think we can do any more really with that.
Councillor Thompson.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Thank you for your report, and thank you for reminding us of our corporate care responsibility for children. I'm particularly wishing to refer this afternoon operated in your report in respect of those children who have been electively home-educated. The statistics that you provide are concerning. We are advised that last year, in the academic year, there was a 22% increase in home schooling. And then in the current year, a further 22% increase in home schooling. It is very difficult for a lay member to really begin to understand how the benefits of home schooling outweigh those provided by statutory educational facility. I think most of us would be understanding of the benefits of a comprehensive curriculum, but also of extra-curricular facilities that a child can benefit from, that cannot readily, sensibly be produced in a home environment. That is not to say that there may be some homes where the educational provision might be better than that provided by an institution, but that is a question of perhaps judgment and difficult to correctly ascertain. So my questions really are about how do we really objectively evaluate the need of a child to be categorised of falling under special educational needs heading? And if the incidence of increase in that category is apparent year on year, what is being done within the educational system to mitigate against that, or indeed attempt to provide for it not increasing? So there is the question of how do we actually evaluate special educational need? And how do we permit to be provided? I think we also should be looking at how do we monitor performance at home? Because it's the child at the end of the day, is it not, that is our interest and our responsibility? And what, the final question and most fundamental, is what engagement are we having with educational institutions to ensure that they are doing their level best to provide the basic education that every child should have a right to have delivered to it, irrespective of its academic potential or its mental condition, considered in some instances to be specialist? Are those institutions making provision for? Now, we've all had discussions about academies, and our interest as a local authority in being able to influence and have a direct contribution to their management. But I do feel, Mr Mayor, that our corporate responsibility demands that we make every single effort, the requirement or not, to engage with schools, to ensure that they are doing everything that possibly can be done to deliver an education that every parent will want to take advantage of and not seek to provide alternative education at home. And the statistics before us in this report are of great concern. But even if it was one child and not 430, our concern should be directed at the system. So I asked the cabinet member, what actions are we taking as an authority to engage with those who are committed and provided statutorily to providing education, to ensure that this aspect of it is properly addressed?
Councillors.
Yeah, thanks, Philip. Yeah, I generally agree with you. There's too many children not participating or being home schooled. And there are national criteria for it. I'm not certain exactly what the criteria are, it comes up at scrutiny, this, from time to time. So I think Danielle will circulate what we actually do, but we meet the requirements nationally. And I agree with you, I think there should be stronger support, stronger monitoring, you know. People, I think sometimes, a lot of people, and they have this right to take their children out of school, just don't like want to go to school and so on. I mean, that's not good for the children, is it? But we have our hands tied by national criteria. I mean, this is not a problem just in Redcar and Cleveland, this is a national issue. It's a kind of a post-COVID thing that these numbers seem to have gone up everywhere. If you look at other authorities, they're no different to us. And they do have to, there is some support, but the outcomes, you know, the GCSEs, you know, the O levels and so on, exam performance by children home schooled is not very good. It's nowhere near as good as people who go in mainstream education. We have a high-quality education system for everybody, don't we? So, I mean, I worry that there are some people who are using home school as an umbrella for not, because they can't be bothered to get the kid out of the bed in the morning, send them to school, for some. I also worry, I'll tell you what's something that worried me, that I was talking to somebody who was overseeing education in Manchester a few months ago, and she was concerned that people were home schooling, and there were some nefarious organisations who were taking curriculums to the parents who were home schooling, to deliver, which had got, you know, I'm just going to be careful how I put this, but, you know, undesirable ideas and so forth there. So I share your concerns about it. I hope that the government, you know, the government are going to be looking at this, I hope, in some of the white papers that are coming up, and that this will improve. So, I mean, I think we're in the same place here.
Councillor Hanaway.
Mr Mayor, thank you for your report, councillors. I'll just wait until I've got your attention. You all right? Okay. Firstly, sorry to be a bit picky, but I think it's an important point. You generously shared out the credit for your report at the beginning. But it's important that you realise that as far as we're concerned, this is your report. Because you are our representative and the public's representative inside the world of children's services. And so we very much rely on you to give an accurate account of it. So while it's nice for you to give credit to others, obviously you're the one who's accountable for this report. First question, I'm sorry to get on to a hobby horse of mine, but I see that a staggering 33.6% of secondary pupils had persistent absence last year, gone down a bit to 27% in this year. It's an absolutely staggering number, and it obviously shows that parental fines, to get on to that subject again, have absolutely no effect on those figures. I mean, presumably the fines would have to be absolutely enormous to have any effect, and they're clearly not doing so. Now, given that we say at the moment that everyone is responsible, you know, absence, attendance is everybody's issue. But obviously, the people we most need to get on board with that are the parents. So it seems to me from these figures, it's obvious that we're alienating them with the fines to absolutely no effect. Because remember, the fine is not for going on holiday, it's for unauthorised absence. Clearly, it's just not working, and I can't see why we go on doing it. So I'd be interested in your view on that issue. Secondly, can I ask about the PVIs in the context of childcare? So these are, it could be a nursery that runs the service, it could be a volunteer group that go into schools and provide childcare. And I see there's a new one opening up, which is a very good thing, because there are reports in the national press that the academies themselves are getting rid of their PVIs so that they can get the funding to run their own service. And that in itself isn't a problem, but there was a report in The Guardian that said that what's happening is they are taking the same children but counting it as extra provision. Because of course, the government has promised extra provision to working parents of three and four-year-olds. So I just would like to ask you for some assurance that that isn't something that would happen here, and that extra provision for parents for childcare is actually extra provision. They're not just cannibalising the existing numbers from the PVIs. And thirdly, could I ask about the routine child measurement programme that happens every year when the nursery service records the height? I can see Patrick Rice is smiling, he knows I'm going to go on about this because I always do every year. They record the height and the weight of the child, come up with the BMI figure and sent, and if it's over the tolerated number, then they send a letter to parents which simply says, "to the parents of", and then the child's name. Now, these letters are, I think, printed by the NHS, but they go out with our logo on the top, which means we risk a child opening the envelope and seeing that the local authority has declared them to be obese, or whatever. Do you know, obviously this has been going on for a long time, this measurement programme, I think at least, at least half. Is there any evidence you know of that sending these letters has actually on the obesity problem with children? Thank you very much.
Councillors.
Right, that's an eclectic mix of questions, Craig. Well, maybe, I didn't, I put a lot into the report if it's behind the words, rather than, you know, it's in the moulding of the strategies and the policies, rather than writing all the words in it. So I think I was fair in the way that I presented it, and, you know, I'm quite happy to be, you know, to be questioned about it. Because, you know, I mean, I think 5% of my job is scrutinising and telling experts, professionals what to do. I think 95% of my role is to be an advocate. I think ninety-five percent of my role is to be an advocate when they're doing the right things. And that's what I'm trying to be with this report. I'm quite happy to be able to account on this report and anything else that happens in Children's Services. Fines for absence, these are national regulations, I think you know that. These are national regulations which we have to implement. I mean, I've got my own feelings about how we should deal with holidays and so on. I mean, this is the way that the market works. You know, everywhere, apart from, it seems like Leicestershire, and I brought this up at the last scrutiny meeting, actually, everywhere apart from Leicestershire seems to have their holidays at the same time. And it's just a free, and Glenn's not here, is it? You know, it's 101 economics, you know, there's a free market and the price of holidays goes up. And I wonder if we could do something at that side of things. But it's my personal view rather than the view from the Children's Directorate. I think our position is that these are national regulations. We've got to implement those national regulations. And they, you know, absences, I think you asked about absences, didn't you, in general? That they've gone up. And since COVID, that's been a trend everywhere, you know. Absences have gone up. And we are doing everything we can to deal with that. I don't know, what would they have been if we weren't doing things? You know, this is the great unknown, isn't it? But we are responding to it. I didn't quite get your point about PVIs, which is about the, we're double counting these things. I'm sure in a way that some of that kind of thing goes on. I mean, I'll just say, a personal experience, this is not really part of the report, but personal experience, in my son's school, where they're getting free breakfast, the children get free breakfast now. They were getting free breakfast before because Greggs were providing them before. So, you know, you could say that that's sort of double counting in a way. And I'm sure there might be an element of double counting in additional care, all sorts of additional care before and after school and in nurses and so on. The BMI numbers, gosh, I don't know how to answer that one. I'm hoping that Danielle's making some notes about this. The letters should clearly be directed to the parents, shouldn't they? I don't know if the letters are having any effect or not. I think we've got an obesity crisis, haven't we? I think, I presume it's getting worse. I don't know the answers to that. And I'm sorry, but maybe we'll be able to get something to you about it. And I hope I've answered your questions. If not, I'm always happy to answer questions about any of this stuff.
Thank you. I've still got seven people wishing to ask questions. So I would say that I won't accept any more questions after Counselor Selvin. Counselor Jay Hart.
Thank you, Bill, for a brilliant report. And thank you, Danielle, and your team as always. You deliver from the front and you do lead a fantastic team. And I would like to agree with you on page fifty-three, when you say that our vision is to develop our own children's homes so our children can live in their communities and be cared for by our staff. And I've been banging on that banjo for the last two years myself. We still have a long way to go with this, though, because we are still using Airbnbs at the cost of seven hundred pounds a week to put children in, which aren't there for temporary measures. You know, they're coming up to a year and over a year and they're still in the same accommodations. So we really do have to work harder in this area. And I would love to know what your thoughts are there, Bill, because I'm sure that you agree with me. We've had conversations in the past about this. I was grateful to see that we're actually getting some data back with Strive and Thrive now. And although it is still early days, I really do think that those areas are a brilliant investment for our money and that we should be focusing on, you know, making sure that these are well delivered. And two more things. One is looking again at private care companies who, you know, we say every time that we have a report from Children's Services, they've got us over a barrel. Well, it's time we change the barrel of beer now. And it's time that we started putting a lot of effort and emphasis on who are looking after our children. It isn't just the cost of the care, it's the quality of the care that we are delivering to ensure that these young people can live their best lives. And thank you very much for your report, Bill.
Counselor Suthers.
I'm glad you're letting me answer these one at a time rather than having to answer them all at once at the end because there's so many issues here. Yeah, I think we talk about our own care homes. This is an area to answer, Craig, which I've put a lot of my efforts into. You know, that having children cared for close to their homes, you know, in the borough or very close to the borough is really important. And we're striving for that. And I haven't done a great deal about this because it comes to scrutiny. I've put a great deal about this in the report. But I mean, I'll just mention one instance here. With No Wrong Door, Kirkleeth, you know, now it's changed, it's called Churchview now. Previously, it was a system that came from North Yorkshire. And we've reinvented that. That's not the right word, you know. And now, instead of it being, there's just been one person in there who's really in great deal of need. We've got five, a sixth, a sixth place, but not totally full at the moment. And that change is being managed by Laura Wedgwood, who's fantastic, you know, and we're making, and that's not a subjective comment from me. That's what Ofsted said. Yeah, it's a fantastic thing. And we got very positive. And Laura, and she's going to oversee the further provision that we're developing in close proximity to there, which is on the books. And I did mention in the report that Andy's doing a lot of work on this. I'm not familiar with, and I don't know whether Danielle, I'll have to get back to you about the Airbnb arrangements. But we have, I can give you some numbers on that. We have one hundred and eighty-seven children at the first of October with our own foster carers. We've got fifty-three children with independent foster agencies. We've twenty-seven children who are in connected carers, that's family and friends. We've got another twenty-seven who are actually placed with their parents, although they're in care, being carefully overseen. We've got children's homes and supported accommodation residential with eighty-five children. And there's only thirty-one left who are in other types of accommodation. Now, these can be unregulated, you know, we've got to look after the children and we strive to have them all in regulated care. But there are some who are in houses with staff. They've got family carers who don't quite meet the fostering regulation requirements, but we feel that's the best for the child. And there are some in secure accommodation, some mothers and babies. So the vast majority are in regulated placements. So I'm not quite recognised the Airbnb. And perhaps we can have a chat with Danielle about what you mean about that afterwards. Thrive at Five, I mean, the idea is to make sure the kids are ready for school and so on. And in some areas, they're not, you know. It's a problem. But we've already been dealing with this, you know. Their first operation was in Stoke and they started from scratch. But we're a bit ahead of the game with this. You know, Jane has done a lot of work on this, you know, the School Readiness Programme and so on. So we're already up there. So when they started, Thrive at Five had a difficulty coming in because they were coming in partway up, you know. Hopefully, we're getting some sort of results. We're at the, you know, it takes a bit of time for them to do the work and we're starting to get some results from them now. We haven't quite got the report. We need to check what difference it's making and so on. Private care companies, you're quite right, the markets failed. Markets fail, all markets fail, don't they? And the markets failed. I mean, I'm a big favour of cooperation, you know, cooperatives. You know, that's my political, that's where I sit politically, that we need to cooperate more. And I think the government are pursuing that, you know. And I know that Josh McAllister, the new minister for children, is pushing more for care cooperatives. There's a lot of work going on with work cooperatives. I've got a whole list of notes on this that Danielle's involved in with the TESB, but more than wider north-east in cooperation. And this is one of the areas of where we're working. So I hope that's answered my questions as best I can. There's so much to all this, you know, I could go on all day. So I better sit down.
Thank you. Counselor Martin. Counselor Martin.
Don't worry, I'm going to go straight to the question. Obviously, I've been on the regularity committee now since I've become a councillor, getting on for four years. And this year, it's sort of been unindated with private companies converting various properties to care facilities for children, going from one child to ten. I'm just wondering how is this cost-effective for the council regarding paying the private companies to obviously do it all in-house? And does the council have a number of how many actually residential placements, buildings we actually need in case we start getting unindated on these properties?
Counselor Suthers.
Yeah, thanks. It's a good question. We, any private organisation can apply to register a care home. I'm not sure about the planning rules with regard to this. I think that they can just register. I'm not quite sure where it comes to planning, so I can't entirely answer that. But what I say is, it's not, they don't come to us in children's before they go to planning. You know, if they open a care home in your area, they don't necessarily provide care for our children. They could be providing care for children from London or from maybe Cardiff, maybe not Cardiff, I don't know. But they don't have to, when they, that's a separate thing. They can apply for a children's home, that's a planning matter. But as far as the children's, it's not for our children necessarily. That's part of the free market. No. No, they can go anywhere. They're not for children in Redcar, not in general. If you want to open a care home, you want to apply for planning permission for a care home, you don't have to be for children in Redcar and Cleveland. Think that, is that the answer? I think that's right. And if I'm wrong, Danielle will correct me and let us both know.
Thank you. Counselor Joy.
Thank you. Thanks for your report, Counselor Suthers. Mine is quite a simple question, actually. You mentioned corporate parenting and obviously everybody in this room is a corporate parent. So this is something that the Chair of the Corporate Parenting Board has brought up before and had noticed in the report and just wanted to shine a light. And I'm going to use you as a vehicle to ask the question. Can we all do more to turn up at corporate parenting events? Because I think the attendance at the moment has been noted by the Chair as being quite low. And I am not pointing fingers because I have not managed to get to one myself. So this is not a criticism, but this is just an ask if you could ask us all to look at our attendance because it means so much to the children that, well, the young people, rather, that was very patronising. The young people that, you know, we are in looked after care. So I'm just using you as a vehicle.
Counselor Suthers.
I just went for the red light, that's all. Thanks for that. That's a question I know I can get, I've got the answer to. Yes, I agree entirely with you. We don't do enough corporate parenting training, do we? It's a responsibility that we all have. And it's a responsibility that we all have. And it's something that we all should take very seriously. It's really important, you know, that looking after the future generations, keeping children safe and all that kind of thing. It's really important. I think we should all be required to do an annual top-up. But, you know, we should do one when we start, some sort of trend, and an annual top-up. So I'd be very much in favour of us doing far more than that. And if anybody is similarly concerned, go along next week to, you've got the email about it, go along next week to the Inspire to Learn events in Normandy.
Counselor Kerr.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Thank you, Bill, for your report. I have an observation. I don't accept what you said right at the beginning of the report when you said, or right at the beginning of your presentation, when you said that it was all right for financial aspects to be somewhere else. I believe that we need to have performance management and finance on the same page in order for members to have a good rounded picture about how the organisation is doing. A very small number of us get to sit on the Corporate Resources Committee. So to have an annual report that is financial information, I don't think to go about things. You do have one pound sign and that is on page thirty-five when you talk about the High Needs Block. Now, it's not just me banging on about this because it is something that has been supported by council. The Budget, Task and Finish Group made a recommendation, and I'm not making this up. The Budget, Task and Finish Group made a recommendation about linking performance management with the Medium-Term Financial Plan to develop that thinking where that was feasible. And that recommendation, all the recommendations of the Budget, Task and Finish Group were accepted by council. So it would have been a good opportunity, I feel, to maybe start moving out of our silos a little bit that the new chief executive has spoken about already and to see how we can maybe develop things in the future. But that is not to detract from all the amazing work that our staff do. And we see that close-up, of course, on the children's scrutiny and the parenting board. So thank you.
Counselor Suthers.
Yeah, I mean, numbers is more my game than children, to be honest. So I agree that, you know, that the numbers are quite important in all of this. And we should be monitoring performance. And we should be looking at the, getting the most benefit from spending our scarce resources, you know, maximising the return and all that and so on. You know, that's lecture one of Economics 101. We should have some KPIs that we should be looking towards. I didn't really think that that was what should have been in this report, so I kind of probably disagree with you in a way there. But I mentioned the finances on the High Needs Block. And, I mean, I don't want to say too much about that. You know, but that's an area we could, we look at that at the Schools Forum. But, you know, that's an area I could have looked at. And I did consider putting in because, you know, we get the dedicated schools grant. You see, this is where it could go if we're not careful with it. Dedicated schools grant. And in twenty eighteen nineteen, there was a deficit of point three million on there. And at the start of the last financial year, it was six or six and a half million. And now the debt is up to twelve point five million. It's starting to get a big significant number because of the formula's not right. We're not getting enough money to pass on to the schools for the High Needs Block. In fact, the schools take half percent air trim, what do they call that, trim, to help to finance this. But we've still got that sat on the side of our accounts. It's not part of our accounts, but it is part of our accounts. So hopefully, at some point, the government might write it off and so on. So, you know, there's an interest on that sort of debt. I'm not quite sure how that sits in the accounts. And you'd have to inquire from Phil about that. But I understand that we've had about one point But I understand that we've had about 1.25 million interest over that six-year period on that. And then it starts to become a major item. And I mean, if we're looking to depth on that sort of thing, I don't think that we could probably do it here. What we should be, what we could consider here, and I only briefly mention in the report is, if you're talking about the finances, or you're talking about the money side of things, the big thing is the high cost placements. I didn't mention it when I spoke, I didn't go into detail, but as you prompt me, and I've got some notes on it here, I could say that we've got 91 children in these, almost 60 of them are in high cost placement. So we've got, and I'll just read these numbers out so that you can see. We've got 32 children who cost between £5,000 and £7,000 a week. If you work that out, it's between £250,000 and £350,000 a year. We've got 32 in that category, with 12 who are £7,000 to £10,000 a year. We've got three who are £10,000 to £13,000, sorry, a week this is, not a year. You know, you'll have to work that out. I mean, £10,000 a week is half a million pounds, isn't it? We've got eight in the £13,000 to £16,000 a week category. We're talking about, you asked me about finances, this is where the finances are in all of this. We've got two who cost between £16,000 and £20,000 a week. And we've got one who costs between £20,000 and £22,000 a week. Well, £20,000 a week is over a million, isn't it? So, you know, these are major costs, you know. So if we're looking at any cost efficiencies and saying, this is what we've got to drill down on, isn't it? You know, that's the sort of where we need to get that sort of accommodation. Well, we have. It is, it is mentioned, it is not, it is mentioned, but it's not, you know, if we're going to detail on everything, it should be 50,000 words rather than 13,000 or 14,000 words, the report. And these things do come up at scrutiny and go into detail that. I didn't think that the report, I didn't think that the report should have all this detailed finance about the dedicated school grant, about the high cost placement, and one thing and another in this report. These are the things that we can look at in detail at scrutiny rather than a quick answer in two minutes across here. I'm just giving you the detail, you know, which we can look at, which we'd look at in more depth at scrutiny. But, you know, these high cost, how do we deal with those? That's the crucial financial, you were asking about the financial thing there. Well, it's at scrutiny.
Councillor Eroid?
Just to echo, just in terms of the costs on there and just being able to understand the cost comparison, that's a very valid point. And what I was going, sort of, right, I stole them thunder a little bit. I do have a specific question with regards to the in-house children's homes. Because there does, as councillor Martin pointed out there, there does seem to be a bit of price gouging and profiteering from the care of children. I mean, can you believe it, from the care of children? I've got a specific example that I know in Mask where there was an overvalue property, £200 over market rate being rented out. It was then taken up by a care home provider because, of course, they will then get that rent paid for by the public purse. This is the kind of extortion that's going on. First of all, I just want to ask a question because this seems a very good model, this in-house children's home here. Especially when you're achieving such good Ofsted reports and you should be congratulated on that. I was wondering what is the scope to be able to increase that? I understand that you've already touched on this. And also, have you done a cost comparison in terms of running the provision yourself and then providing the subsidies to the private sector? Thank you.
Councillor Suthers?
I can't, obviously can't answer the specific one about Mask, but, you know, maybe Danielle might be like that. But yeah, what's happening, there's a limit, isn't there? I mean, the market prices are so high now that it allows us to provide our own provision. We've got to be very careful that we don't overdo it and we end up, you know, that it'd be cheaper to use the free market. So there's a little bit of, a little bit of to and fro with regard to that. And at the moment, we are, I don't know how far I can go with this, but we are on the cusp of extending the care homes that we oversee. We're looking at a number of properties, it's come up at scrutiny. And there are, I mean, there are other provisions. There's the one at Skinning Grove, the old school at Skinning Grove, for example, which is, you know, which is going to be developed for high needs children. And we will get prefer, we haven't got the funds to do up that facility. So we're getting a provider to pay to do it up. And then we get a contract with them, which is preferential rates and preferential. And apart from, the kids that are going there would otherwise, I hope this has been coherent, first, sorry. But the kids who will be going into that home at Skinning Grove, for example, where we've got preferential placements at, would have to go a long way away. They're closer to the family, it's a lot, it's a lot better for the family. So there are social benefits and the financial benefit as well. And so we've got to be careful how far we go with this. You know, at the moment, we can do this and save lots of money. And so it's a financial and a social benefit, you know. And the change that similarly have been beneficial in that regard. There's going to be a limit, there's a limit depending on the market. You know, if everybody starts doing this, if we start doing things as cooperatives across the north east, you know. I'm gonna have a meeting with Josh McAllister to talk to him about the way that these care cooperatives are going to operate. If we get those, then the private sector are gonna have to cut the prices, aren't they, to try and compete? So we're playing against the market a little bit here. So there's a kind of a balance to be had. And what you've got to be is, you've got to be cognisant of that, you've got to keep your eye on it all the time and so on. But at the moment, we are going to expand our own in care provision. I'm talking about it, I said it's invest to save, we'll have to borrow some money, but paying the interest on the money will be substantially less than what we're paying out in the fees and so on. I hope that answers.
Sorry, it's a question and answer, not a debate.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I've just got a brief comment to make and it's to echo all that's been said about the work of children's services. But in particular, I think the target leaving care has been wonderful, the work that we've been doing with our young people who still need the support up to 25 when they've left home, the same as we give support to our children. And also that we're going to be working on the Care Leavers Covenant. I think that's a really good thing to renew. What I did want to mention was, are there any plans to promote reading? I know that we do, and we do lots of work with our children when they first come into school if they don't have such good language abilities. But there's been a lot of work going on at the moment about actually getting hold of a book. And whether it's a media or whatever means you're using, you still need words to promote what you want to say or pass on to someone. So I just wondered if we had any projects in mind. And I'm sure we do do some working with our local libraries anyway. But I would be grateful if that could be maybe a consideration to promote that even more. Thank you, Mr, thank you, Bill.
Councillor Suthers?
Thanks more for those, yeah. Leaving care, whenever you look at the metrics, they're real, you know, if you've got in scrutiny, they're really poor for children leaving care. We have this care coming up, you know, we're working on, Danielle and I had a meeting with a local businessman earlier today, in fact, talking about this very problem of how we can amend or develop our strategies for supporting the 18-year-old children who are leaving care into a suitable accommodation. You know, a discussion about that. And how we can create employment for them and what sort of projects would help them to develop the skills and plans for the future and so on. Because we know that 18-year-olds, you know, I've had 18-year-old children, they've no idea about life and things. And we need to continue to support children. So we do, we've continued, when children are 18, they don't just leave care. We're still supporting them until, I think it's 24 or 25 now. So that continues. And one of the aspects of that, I had the pleasure of going along with Cannabough. I got there to cut the ribbon before the mayor, sorry about that, Ian, at the Target facility just on here. I think I was in Millbank, is it called, just around here? We, we have Andrea Hill, who was really, really keen on supporting kids when, you know, children when they leave care and so on. And that's a great facility just there. So we are doing all sorts of things to try and support them, children who are leaving care. I think you mentioned really asylum there as well, asylum, separated migrant children, we call them. The teams, the asylum through care team, Elaine Spencer runs that, very efficient, you know, it's a great operation. In fact, so good, it's such a good team that Ben, is mentioned in the report, Ben, I won't try and pronounce his surname, is one of our social workers who got a national award for his work with asylum-seeking or separated migrant children. I've got to get the terminology right. I like your idea about working with the local libraries though, because it's really important, isn't it, that we develop language skills? I don't know what we do in that regard. And if we don't, then we'll have, we can get in touch with you and about it and so on. There is some work that goes on that I've been informed about by a colleague of mine here. But we'll get back to you about what it is and whether we can work together on developing that further.
Final question, councillor Salvin?
Thanks, Mr Mayor. Yeah, just, me and councillor Suthers have spoken to this briefly and I never managed to get a question to you, Bill, so I thought this is a perfect place to have these announced it. So today marks the start of Baby Loss Awareness Week from a good charity locally called Leo's. And they deal with basically helping parents who have lost a baby locally. And I'm sure we'll all agree that that's a great charity to support there. And Bill, my question is just, in the last few years, we've, as a councillor, supported this great charity for 23 years. It's been going on. And we've basically lit up the buildings in pink as kind of a mark of respect to this charity locally. The question is basically, will we be helping support this charity this week? And what are we doing to support the charity?
Councillor Suthers?
Thanks, Paul, yeah, you did say you were gonna ask me a question about this, didn't quite get there. Please ask me questions, folks, and I can give you more full, if I've ignored the questions before and I can give you fuller and better answers than trying to do it on the hoof like this. But Paul did approach me about the Baby Loss Awareness Week that's coming up. And I forwarded that on to people. And I believe that some of these things are taking place and it's very important that we do support that. You know, the babies and unborn children, it's a major initiative that we have, you know. Over at the MATCH, the multi-agency children's hub over in Almsby, we have a team who, a pre-birth team, that's really about babies coming into care rather than babies and baby loss and so on. And they work really hard at supporting babies and children. It's very difficult at times when children, when babies are lost. That is, you know, that is a real heartbreaker for all of us. But we do work to support that. I just mentioned the other thing that, one of the things that really, when it's look at the numbers, to finish on a positive note, one of the numbers that I really impressed with when I've been to a lot of these committees is with Fiona, she's one of the health officers who's retired now. But the numbers, the work that she'd done on promoting breastfeeding through the family hubs and the increase in breastfeeding, which gives the baby a great start in life. It's not my area of expertise by any means, of course. But I thought that was really great and really impressive and a real success for this authority on that work of Fiona's. But thanks very much for bringing to our attention the baby loss thing, a nightmare for anybody. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Suthers. Move on now to item 10, two reports from the leader of the council. First is decisions taken under urgent provision and a review of proportionality and distribution of seats. There, just note on the second item that there's an error in paragraph 317 on page 65 of the report. There should be a seating allocation to the ungrouped independents on corp, there should be a seat allocation to the ungrouped independents on corporate parenting board rather than resources and governance scrutiny and improvement committee. Councillor Richardson, are you moving the motion? Moving the, there's a mover for 10 minutes, second to five, and a mover again in five minutes, are normal things. Decision under urgent scrutiny?
It was, yeah, the report, sorry, which, we're going back. The decision taken under urgency provisions is just there for information. I'll take any questions if there are any.
Do we have any questions? Seconda? Thank you. And do we have any questions on the urgent provision? No? Do you want to some?
Some people that we needed to add, and Sue says I might have to read them out, is that right? Yeah, so we had Kerry Carley to add to the South East Joint Health Board, Adam Brook to add to governance. You don't want it now, okay, thank you.
No, no, that's coming up. No, it's just the review, the review of proportionality and distribution of seats. We've got a second for, we've had a pause and a second there. So can we accept the report for the decision under urgent provision? Is everyone happy with that? No, great, thank you. And then can we move on to then to the review of proportionality and distribution? Second for that? Yeah, thank you, councillor Massey. You're proposing, yes.
You'll take those, yeah, okay, so we had, yeah, we had a space on South East Joint Health Board, councillor Carley was gonna take that. As governance, we needed somebody. Councillor Brook will take that, and then adults, councillor Cherry. And I believe that covers all the empty positions, okay?
Okay, thank you, I've done that before, the motion to clear it for the motion. Okay, as we'll go on to that next. So can we move then on to the motion, motion one from councillor Eroid?
Thank you very much, Mr Mayor. I've put forward a raft of measures in front of you as part of this motion. There are three particular actions that I'm looking for and there are a number of which I'll go through, not in as much detail as you've seen in your report. I want to give you an outline as to why I have taken this approach here today. So first of all, I'm deeply concerned not only by the health impacts, by the misinformation that's been put out by vendors and I believe council offices over the last year, two years. Not only by the catastrophic environmental destruction, but I'm really worried in terms of the amount of money that's going from the public purse into private pockets in such a manner where it's barely being scrutinised. So the steps that are here being proposed are to provide greater levels of scrutiny to fully understand the need and to fully understand where the money is going. A land option was signed in December 2024 without us being aware, and I found this out in July from Hartlepool Borough Council. It has a five-year penalty on it. 90% of that land is owned by two private individuals, which means that the dues have to be paid. It was previously 100% owned by the public purse. If the amounts which were disclosed by councillor Brown are to be assumed as correct, that is a £20 million bill, £4 million. four million pounds a year, that wouldn't have had to have been paid into private pockets, or at least a proportion, a large proportion of it. If we look at the underlying waste figures, which were first used to determine this project, they were miscalculated. They were based on global figures. These included sewage and industry waste, not just municipal waste. So there is a large question over need. They didn't factor in that food waste would come in in April, because it was unbeknown at the start of the project. And that enhanced recycling, plastic films and deposit scheme would come in. This week I learned from Middlesbrough Council that the price per tonne at the gate will be a hundred and forty four pounds. The market rate in twenty twenty three was a hundred and three. It is thirty one pounds more. Now, these little details are coming through and it's starting to appear what a bad deal this is. That would result in a three point six million pound bill in the first year based on penalties alone. Because of the miscalculation in the global waste sums, seven councils leave a twenty five thousand tonne deficit. It is because there is scrutiny and due diligence, in my opinion, hasn't taken place. Indeed, I talked about the need. It has emerged from Haberton Hill in the past month that there is a thirty five percent capacity after twenty twenty six, April twenty twenty six, in that site alone, a thirty percent capacity in the Wilton site. That leaves us with sixty five to seventy percent over the exceeding figures which have included in this report. So in terms of capacity, there is no doubt there is incineration capacity locally, independent reports. I mentioned there with regards to the market price, but something that crucially wasn't included when this idea was first conceived in twenty eighteen was the carbon bill, the ETS scheme. This would result in a one point six billion fee on top of the two point one billion cost of running this facility, on top of the naught point three billion to build it, and on top of the thirty three point six million bill for not reaching the penalty targets. Remember, in this particular contract and tender, there are penalty targets. Throughout the country, there are councils battling against unfair contracts with incinerator firms. One of them is our neighbour, North Yorkshire. So secretive is that deal, that council is in that borough, are unable to get hold of the deal. But what they do know is it's a massive drain on their finances. What we heard today was a lot of passion around children's services. That's where we want the money from this borough to go, children's services, hospitals, schools. We heard about send transport, transport for our young people, budgets for colleges. But instead, we have a prospective four billion pounds going to private benefactors, currently in the United States, soon to be in China, not British pockets. And that money will go from the local council tax and then will be siphoned off. And what I'm asking for in this raft of measures in front of us is supposed to have greater scrutiny over where that money is going and over how this decision has been reached. Because it hasn't been reached by councillors, it's been reached away from our view. And I'm asking, in this particular motion, three particular steps. Clarity on the background and that we believe entering into long-term exclusive waste disposal contracts risks locking residents into higher costs, higher carbon pathways, undermines recycling, waste prevention duties and future compliance with the carbon trading scheme. And that the project and any exclusivity clauses would benefit from being stress-tested against high recycling, low residual scenarios, of which they've not been. That feedstock competition and carbon costs pass through. I remind you that there are two low-carbon schemes for residual waste being planned in the Teesworks region. So the recommendation for cabinet is that the cabinet does not progress with the approval of any contract exclusivity agreement or other binding commitment relating to the Tees Valley Energy Recovery Facility at Grangestown or equivalent residual waste treatment arrangements until the following issues are resolved. Environmental agency standards and shifting compliance costs are fully determined. Decarbonisation readiness and carbon capture readiness is fully determined in terms of who bears responsibility for the costs, who bears responsibility for the compliance, as it cannot be demonstrated to environmental agency satisfaction. We want to also look at the exclusivity and market test of alternatives, which hasn't been carried out. I offered an alternative eighteen months ago. It was dismissed, but it was never tested. And we know that these schemes are viable. And we now know that in terms of the food waste scheme, the gasification food waste scheme is viable and it will be a UK scheme and it will come to Redcar and Cleveland in April. And we were told a year ago it was in feasible. The UTS cost exposure, plastic supportment, we want to be tested with sensitivity analysis. We want feedstock risk and put or pay, confirmation of the minimum tonnage, confirmation of feedstock risks, confirmation of council liabilities, and that they are significantly, genuinely less than the residual waste costs that we're facing. We want back-to-market demand risk assessments. And then in terms of the overcapacity, to provide an independent report, not one from Viridor, not one from council officers via Viridor, but a truly independent report on regional overcapacity. The government provided a note on this, it saying that the region was overcapacity in December, thirtieth of December twenty twenty four. Yet that hasn't been carried out and that hasn't been listened to. And in the same month, a land agreement was deal, was signed. We want full case, full business case and transparency. There is no full business case. We are this far down the line and there is no full business case. And with the scenarios built in with regards to contract flexibility, break clauses which don't appear in the tender, tonnage bands, revenue share, indexation caps. We want governance and reporting, which is also absent. We require annual reports on emissions, waste, costs, ETS costs, diversion of organics, so we can monitor thoroughly where our recycling is going. Remember, incinerators need plastics to function. They want our plastics, they want our recycling. We don't want it to go there. So the recommendation to the chief executive as such is that they invite it to write to DEFRA in closing this resolution, seeking support to prevent contractual locking. We don't want to be in the same position as North Yorkshire. We don't want to be locked into costs. We want our money to go to children. We want our money to go to adult services. We want our money to go to transport. That's where we want it to go. We want it to go on healthcare. We don't want it to go to private profiteers. So the recommendation for the leader and the portfolio holder, that they encourage to coordinate with partner authorities.
One minute.
I've run enough, thank you. With partner authorities to ensure the procurement and inter-authority agreements exclude provisions such as minimum tourage guarantees, pay, put or pay clauses, banding, that there are exclusivity and market test alternatives, that the ETS cost exposure and plastic apportionment has a thorough formula and has been thoroughly appraised. The feedstock risks have been assessed and the overcapacity, which we know there is an overcapacity, has an independent report. We want full business case transparency again via that route, not just via one route, but via the chief exec as well. We want governance and reporting, not just from one route. Remember, this is four billion. We want it through two independent channels. And so the recommendation is that they write to DEFRA, the chief executive. And recommendations for the leader and portfolio holder encourage to coordinate with partner authorities exactly on those points. So we resolve to adopt the recommendations above. It is resolved to bring the background recommendations to the attention of the chief executive, leader, portfolio holder at the earliest stage, and there be advice to report back the actions to this motion, should it be approved today. And it is resolved that the above recommendations and backgrounds be brought to cabinet, Mr Mayor, for discussion, decision-making. We want the full facts. Please support the motion. Four billion pounds is at stake.
Thank you, councillor Leroyd. I opened up for debate. If anyone wishes to speak. Oh, I'm sorry. Could I have a second there first?
I'll second the motion, Mr Mayor. Is there a right to speak?
Right, thank you, councillor Salvin. So opened up for debate. Councillor Joy.
Sorry, just to check, you've opened it up for the debate, haven't you? Yeah, right, sorry. Thank you, councillor Leroyd. There's a lot in there. So I'm going to try and simplify it because, actually, first, I'm just going to caveat that this is a really sensible motion for me. And I know everyone will go, it's a bit like my mother, who's a nurse. I know I say the same thing all the time. Everyone knows I'm not a fan of this project, the incinerator. But I just want to separate out some of the way you've articulated the motion from the motion itself. So I I just want to say it's a really, really sensible motion. I'm going to separate out the comments about officer involvement. I think our officers act with the utmost integrity and that that's not in this motion, so we're not commenting on that. As aside from the the land at Teesworks, I agree. I don't think personally it's been done right, but that's not in the motion. So I don't think that, you know, has any bearing on this motion. I think what we're looking at is, I think, you know, these seven local authorities in Redcar and Cleveland Borough Council are being asked to make a decision on a massive project where we'll be locked in. Well, until I'm, I think, I might be eighty. I know I'm giving my age away. And some of us won't be here. I mean, I might be at eighty, who knows? But we'll be locked in or locked out of improvements. So when you're locked in, you can't take advantage of any improvements that might happen. And we don't know what those improvements are going to be. And I think that's the key here, is that we're being locked out of a decision that we're making with a vast amount of public money. And I don't mind if all of the information comes back and is scrutinized appropriately by those who are appropriate. But I I think with the best will in the world, the way it's been done just hasn't been as optimal as it can be. I'm going to use a very diplomatic term. And I don't think anybody's a fan of the process for how it's operated. And everyone would like to see, I don't think there's anybody in here that that is a massive fan of the project itself. But I think all this motion seeks to find is that we look at everything in as detail as we can. I get that some things are commercially sensitive, but there are things like, you know, the, there are things like, I'm not going to list them all because I know it's extensive and I've only got a little bit of time. But, you know, some things like the break clauses, these financial vehicles that I hadn't heard of until, you know, these are, these are pretty integral things. You know, we're spending a lot of this money without knowing all of the details, you know. What happens if the EA suddenly weakens or strengthens emissions? That's going to make a massive bear. And what about carbon capture? Is it ready? Is it not ready? We're not really sure. If it is ready, what sort of technology is it going to be? Is it going to capture a hundred percent? Definitely no. Is it going to capture seventy? We don't know. And this is the point, we don't know. Have we fully explored the business case? Not really. We haven't really explored the market, I don't think. But maybe we have, and that's the point. I don't know. So it just feels remiss of this council to allow a project that we don't, there's so many unknowns. And and I hate unknowns. I like to know what's going on if we're spending this money. And I think the problem is that we don't have sight of that. And and I feel like nobody has had a proper sight of that. We seem to be kicking it to somebody who's going to make a decision, which is a complete Hobson's choice. And I think the sensible it's evidence, and that's why I'll be supporting the motion.
Thank you, councillor Salvin. Do you want to wait until other people have spoke before you think as you're a second there? Okay. Councillor Davies.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Yeah, I I agree with councillor Joy. A lot of what's been, she said, makes a lot of sense, I think. I I probably need to hold my hands, hands up and say that I was one of those, I think I was the councillor that made that decision in twenty twenty one, which was almost four years ago. At the time, we were apparently going to progress with this quite rather quickly. And at the time, obviously, everything was pointing into this was a good idea for the borough. Our costs for getting rid of our waste was excessively high. It was only getting higher and higher every year. So we had to do something to come up with a solution to try and mitigate those excessive costs year in year. So I'm going to apologize for my part in the way that this is still going on and this is still getting to the point where we've got the chief executive now, obviously, with the the decision. And that that shouldn't really have progressed. I think when I stood down for my role, it sort of, maybe whoever took over maybe just continued with that process. But I still, I mean, I can, can everyone remember when we had the all-member briefing session about this? A few, going back a few months now. I think I got up and asked a load of questions and then I got stopped and said, I'll send me the questions over and we'll answer them. Never got any answers for the questions that I asked at that point still. I still feel like there's questions to be asked and that we still haven't got the answers to 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 make an informed decision. And I know that we spoke, well, I spoke with the leader and the deputy leader in Liverpool early this year. And we were, we were talking about this over a social beverage. And one of the things I said was, we need to be given the information to make an informed decision. Because this could either be absolutely fantastic as a as a decision, it could absolutely be catastrophic. And we need to be given the information to make the right informed decision. Because what we don't want, is we don't want to be paying these people millions of pounds when it could be better spent in the things that are our, our council's priorities. And what we don't want as well is is to be lumbered with something that's going to cost us money. Because that two million overspend that we've got this year, all that money that we might be getting from other projects and things down the line, Teesworks, et cetera, is just going to be wasted on on something that we've got an opportunity to to do something about this year. So I know that our group's got a free vote on this, but I think on on the basis of what it, of what's in the the motion for me, I'm going to support it on this occasion. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you. Councillor Hanaway.
Of the motion, it says that national policy requires progress towards sixty five percent municipal recycling by twenty thirty five. And DEFRA's consultation evidence states this would represent a municipal recycling rate of around seventy to seventy five percent by twenty forty two. Now, currently, I think we're at thirty three percent. The document you cite there just talks about behavioural change. But the crucial point is how you would get that change. I mean, I'm not, definitely not an expert in this area, but I understand that that waste is, landfill is the worst way of getting rid of it. Incineration is slightly better than that and better than that is recycling. So could you address, when you sum up, how do you see that behavioural change happening? How how would we get from like thirty three percent up to seventy or seventy five? Thank you.
Councillor McInnes.
Councillor Leroyd, for another well-delivered motion on the subject, his knowledge is a second to none. I'm just going to stress what councillor Joy and councillor Davies said. I think the councils involved have been blinded by burning technology and all progressing with this proposed incinerator with blinkers on. But what we are not considering is the future health and wellbeing of our local community, especially residents of Grangestown. Councillor Leroyd's valid background statement, number seven, about burning food waste is important. This council is introducing household waste collections. Surely this reduces our overall capacity of our own waste by a significant amount, potentially going to this proposed incinerator. Recycling technologies is the way forward. Do you know that we can actually make a carpet out of food waste now? And it's been introduced into buildings now within Middlesbrough Council. This raises the question, does Redcar and Cleveland Council still need another incinerator? And I fully back this motion brought forward today. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Kerr.
Thanks, Mr Mayor, and thank you councillor Leroyd for bringing the motion. I don't pretend to be across this like he is and like others are. However, you can't argue with the lack of scrutiny throughout the whole of this process. It feels like councillors have been locked out of it. Often the information we we have had has proved impossible to verify. And I have a question later on how I was given different information at the last council meeting. No business case certainly seems very unusual. If you think back to April, when we were first going to bring the motion, we were asked to postpone it while the business case was prepared and and we were promised that business case in time for when we would bring it the following month in May. But of course, that has never materialized in all of these months. The cost of pulling out originally was around eight hundred thousand pounds, which were the project costs. And now suddenly, they are twenty two million pounds allegedly. And that has never been properly explained either. And I believe at the last council meeting, the leader was going to seek some independent advice on that figure. So bearing in mind all of that, I think all of us should be very, very cautious. And I'll certainly be supporting the motion. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. I don't have any more apart from Commissioner Salvin, so would you like to?
Yeah, yeah, thanks, Mr Mayor. Put it a bit further forward. Yeah, just like to thank Commissioner Joy, Commissioner Davies, and all those that have spoken on today's motion. I agree with everyone's sentiment. So I won't go along that route. But what I will say is it's clear in the North East of England and the seven councils that are involved with this, with the votes going in at every single council pretty much, that nobody wants this. Councillors don't want it, residents don't want it. And I certainly do not want to be on the wrong side of history on this. I got involved in politics to scrutinise projects like this for far too long, for far too many years. Projects like this have just been passed through without scrutiny, and then thirty years later, you're still paying for it. I cannot sign off on this project in its current form, and I will be one hundred per cent supporting Commissioner Leroy's motion today. Thanks, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner Leroy. Would you like to speak as a mover, sum up?
I can certainly address some of the questions. Is this the point where I round up, or is this where I'm speaking? Sum up, yeah? Okay. So first of all, just in terms of the financial vehicle that I forgot to mention, Commissioner Joy. That's quite correct. There is a special financial vehicle which appeared in the notes at Middlesbrough Council this week. And which just provides another layer of, I wouldn't say secrecy, but a barrier to transparency in terms of the money would be pooled. It could be a limited liability partnership. Similar arrangements have taken place in Yorkshire. They've made it a nightmare for councillors of all different sides there to be able to understand what's happening with the money. Commissioner Davies, the world's changed since 2019 drastically. It was pre-ETS. It was a time when insulation and energy from waste was like the buzz thing. There may have been a competitive market at the time. What we know now with enhanced recycling is that the market has changed. And you're in a situation now, I read in a report from Darlington this week, a question came from a member of the public, where they are considering shipping in waste so they don't get hit now by the penalty clause within the contract. So shipping in from abroad, essentially, where you've got a port facility. So that shows the level of uncertainty about being able to avoid the penalty target. Commissioner Hanaway? In terms of the targets and how they would be met, there are a couple of councils that have already, they've taken a different route. So, for example, in Wales, they've gone with a different route. There are a couple of examples as well written down here, but apparently Shrewsbury's another one, where they've gone with enhanced recycling and sorting, and they've managed to get it to seventy per cent. So although the behavioural baseline's not been good, through these extra mechanical sorting stations and manual sorting stations, they've managed to increase to seventy per cent to hit that target years in advance. So there is an option for us to go down that route. And of course, then benefit from the recycling and the absence of GATES fees. I mentioned there in terms of the GATE fee, we've now learnt that that's 144. Why are we signing a contract for 144 when the market is 103? Which shows how we've got hooked into this early. I'd just remind councillors as well that we had the problem with not being able to create a market. So officers decided that they would produce, essentially pay for the planning approval of two competitors. And the reason that was given to me was because the space wasn't competitive enough. If the space isn't competitive enough, in councillor Suthers' words, that means market failure. Because there is an inability of the market to be able to find ways to serve itself. Commissioner Kerr mentioned there in terms of eight hundred thousand twenty-two. And what I believe happened there was, in July, I asked to see the land option. And the land option had a five-year clause which had to be paid. And that had been signed in the intervening period while we were still debating. So while we're still debating, decisions were being taken. So I'll sum up by saying, please, can you support this motion? The intention is, as Commissioner Joy articulated there, for us to get a fuller understanding of what is happening on this project, to prevent the waste of future public funds, and to divert our public funds to where we want them to go. Care services, schools, health, drought. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Leroy. Could I move to a vote? Okay, could I ask people in favour of the motion to show their hands? Those against? And those abstaining? No, don't need to. Okay, it's all right. The motion is passed. Now, we have ten questions from members of the council. Would the councillors like a quick refreshment break? So can we meet again back here in ten past four? At the latest? Ten past four at the latest, fifteen minutes. Comfort break?
Okay, everybody, I'm aware time is passing and also I'm aware that councillor Richardson has to leave reasonably quickly. So can we all settle down, please? Quickly, can I just, item 12 in the appointment of members, could I just ask if, we had a list of changes from councillor Richardson, I didn't ask if there were any other people wanting to go ahead for the recommended replacement. So is there any other nominations for those the ungrouped, independent to be forward, for instance, councillor Collier, et cetera? If not, can we just accept that the changes as, yeah, if we're all happy to move on? Right, now, as councillor Richardson needs to leave, I'm proposing a change in the order of questions. And councillor Richard, councillor Richardson would answer questions four and 10, which got the same answer, followed by six, seven, eight and nine. That leaves the questions to councillor Brook, one, two, three and five. Now, as councillor Taylor is absent for question five, councillor Grogan is proposing that he answer that, he asked that question. If everybody is happy for that, those changes take place, we can move on with the questions. Is everyone, everyone happy with the changing the order in order to accommodate everybody? Okay, thank you very much, everyone. So I know that we've got one response for question four and 10. Shall we take those first?
To both questions four and 10, he's issued one response, and he's not here today because he's got Covid. So if I can just read that reply, and if you have any supplementaries to put them in writing to councillor Quatermain, please. All right. In early September, I wrote to all members ahead of the meeting with the TVCA regarding future bus service proposals. The purpose of this correspondence was to ensure that I could accurately represent councillors by giving an opportunity to set out service issues affecting your respective wards. I subsequently brought those responses together as part of Redcomb Cleveland's overall submission to ensure that the concerns raised about our local bus service, many of which were reduced and cut by the TVCA in 2023, continue to be recognised as ongoing concerns and to explore whether there's any scope for reconsideration. Whilst I remain realistic about the challenges, it would be remiss of me as cabinet member not to continue to press these concerns back to the TVCA firmly on behalf of our communities. I received 20 responses from 20 councillors, each setting out local priorities, all equally important and reflect the work councillors are doing on behalf of their residents across the borough. All of these requests, which includes those raised in the two questions today, have been presented to the TVCA. And then it's missing a bit. Once I have it, I think he means their response, I will share the feedback from the TVCA on all 20 of these representations with all members. Any additional services will be reliant on the BSIP funding allocation for 26, 27, which will be announced in late autumn. Finally, and to be clear, since devolution, control over bus subsidies, contracts and services sits with the Tees Valley Combined Authority and the Tees Valley Mayor, who act as the local statutory transport authority for our region. This means the council has no direct control over public transport or which routes are funded or where services are restored. We can only make strong representations to ensure that the needs of our residents are properly heard and considered in those decisions. This is what I'm going to do and will continue to do on behalf of you and the residents of our borough.
Thank you. Can we move on to question six from councillor Eroid? And it's councillor Brown in his absence. Go ahead.
Yeah, I've supported various British and English sports teams over the years by displaying the appropriate flag of property and mask. In addition, I often raise the Yorkshire rose on Yorkshire Day, 1st of August. Currently, there are many flags in the borough on display attached to council property or on council land. What are these flags celebrating? I'd like to know. And what is the council's policy if flags being displayed on council land either owned or adopted? Thank you.
Councillor Richardson?
We have not formally adopted a policy at this council, as one is not really required.
Right, question seven. Sorry. Oh, sorry. My apologies, councillor Eroid, do you have a supplementary?
I just want to test this policy a little bit. So I go out and I buy 200 pirate flags. So there's nothing at the moment to stop me putting all of these pirate flags around the borough on landposts. Is that, is that what the situation right now? So I can put a statement out to the public, please go out and buy a pirate flag and put it to every single landpost in the borough. And there is absolutely nothing the council can do about it.
Councillor Richardson?
There is no policy, and the council sought advice from the police and layers with other local authorities in the Tees Valley on the matter. If any of the residents are displaying flags on council-owned assets, the council's choosing to leave them up unless they're causing a safety hazard.
Thank you. Thank you. Question seven from councillor Kerr to councillor Brown.
Thank you for, thank you, Miss Smith. Thank you for taking my question, councillor Richardson. We appear, though it's not altogether clear, to be currently employing both a managing director and a chief executive. So can you please explain or clarify what's going on and how that is affordable to us to be employing two heads of paid service? Thank you.
Councillor Richardson?
Yeah. The recruitment process for the new chief exec was planned to ensure continuity and stability for the council. Whilst the intention was to first conduct an internal recruitment exercise, we were mindful this may not result in a successful appointment. In that case, we would have needed to proceed with external recruitment process, which could have taken six months to complete. To mitigate the risk of a prolonged vacancy in the head of paid service role, we began the internal process with sufficient time left to allow for an external search if necessary. Fortunately, the internal exercise was successful, and we were able to appoint. This did, however, result in a short overlap between the appointment of the chief exec and the planned retirement of the incumbent managing director. Whilst that overlap has incurred some additional costs, it was considered a worthwhile investment to avoid a gap in leadership at such a critical level. Importantly, this period of overlap has provided significant benefits to the authority, including a structured handover and a valuable knowledge transfer. Did it? No, I don't think it is. This has helped ensure a smooth transition and continued effective leadership for the council. Thank you.
Yeah, thank, thank you very much. I understand the need for a handover, and, you know, that's quite normal and that's fine. An extra three months, if that's what it is, by my calculation, does seem excessive. And by my, again, on salaries, it's costing us about £50,000. Now, I don't think that is affordable to this council. So, but I understand you've answered the question, so, you know, I'm happy with that. Unless you can, unless you've got anything else. Yeah.
We can't answer that. No, that's right.
Yeah, okay, thank you. And again, thank you for taking the question. At the last council meeting, I was given Duff information, and it harks back to the conversation we've had around the motion. Information has often been impossible to verify. And this, in this instance, it was impossible because the document which I was referred doesn't exist. However, in addition to that, it's transpired after the meeting that a decision on the appointment of the preferred bidder had been made the week before the council meeting. So I was really curious as to why that was not mentioned in this meeting, so councillors could be informed, because it's such a key milestone. And I understand that is when the costs of pulling out started to jump from £800,000 to around £20 million. So if, if you can explain why that was not mentioned, because it seems a really, you know, thank you.
Councillor Richardson?
The written response, but the costs haven't jumped. The indemnity was there from the initial partnership agreement. I'm probably not using the right word for that. But the indemnity was there that if the scheme fell down because somebody withdrew, there would be, the party that pulled out would be liable for all the resulting costs, including procurement. I think there's been a quantification at some point of what that would be, but it didn't change the statement that was in the original terms. So the response I've been given is, in the Cabinet report dated 6th of June, which was provided to all members, that included the confidential copy of the first inter-authority agreement, that's the right word. Whilst there isn't a constitution as such for the board, there is terms of reference for the board, which is included in the IAA. In terms of the appointment of the preferred bidder, the councils were contractually bound to work positively within the procurement process. And this is what was agreed at the point of commencing the procurement. This was the next step in the process that had been commenced five years ago. An optimised final tender was received in March 2025, the evaluation of which confirmed it was a compliant tender which would generate significant cost savings for the council over the life of the contract, as well as providing significant economic regeneration and social value benefits throughout the contract. To refuse to appoint the tenderer would have been held as an unreasonable breach of those requirements and then exposed us for liability to damages for that. The potential implications of withdrawal were set out in the Cabinet report dated June 2025. In the event of any withdrawal, the clause would be applied. And that has, that's what I'm saying, that clause would have been applied at all times since the first IAA was entered into in 2020 and would trigger that liability for indemnities. The other figure is the figure that's been spent on procurement, which is the 900 and something thousand, for which we would immediately become liable if we pulled out. But the indemnity was a separate clause from the inter-authority agreement. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Kerr, do you have a supplementary?
I'm just not sure you answered why it wasn't mentioned in response to my previous question, that the bidder had been appointed, because it's such an important milestone. And it was such a major omission to me for that not to be mentioned in response to my, to my question, because it was a very direct question. But I don't know why Brown didn't.
Can we get that as a written answer, perhaps?
Yeah, I don't know why he didn't. I think I've answered in, in this answer today as to why that, that went forward. But, yeah, we can follow up. Yeah.
We can, yeah. Except. Okay, that leaves question nine from councillor Jay Hart. And councillor Richardson will be answering on behalf of councillor Brown.
Thanks, Carrie.
Questions have been asked recently about the level of service that member inquiries is able to provide to councillors. Despite assurances, we have failed to see any improvement. On the contrary, sorry, I'm reading my own writing backside first here. Despite assurances, we have failed to see any improvement. On the contrary, the service appears to be deteriorating further, with multiple requests about the same issues not being responded to or remaining unsolved. The responsibility for this does not lie with members' enquiries team. In fact, I find them extremely competent. It's a far bigger fundamental question about the information, how the information moves across the organisation, between the offices, members' enquiries and ourselves. At times in the fight for the same information, I can feel like we are not all part of the same team. It is unacceptable, for example, to wait since July and seven emails later, still waiting for a response from the same question. The current system is inefficient, frustrating when councillors are unable to access information required in a timely manner, and ultimately does not allow us to deliver the best services to our residents. Maybe it portrays a lack of trust within the council, or perhaps there are barriers between the councillors and the information they seek, which is unresolved. Can the leader please outline how he might bring about improvement in the ways in which information flows across the organisation to us councillors in a timely fashion? Thank you.
Councillor Richardson?
The members' enquiry system has been very effective since it was introduced and a bit of a victim of its own success. To date, the system's received 10,000 enquiries since its implementation and continues to receive about 350 new jobs each month. As your question highlights, the issue's not really with the members' enquiries staff who handle the large numbers of enquiries, but the position is more difficult for the officers in other departments when they receive the queries to answer or to take on. Most queries are still dealt with in short time scales of the logged jobs. There are, since April this year, there are 1,500 closed in less than five working days, 600 not closed within five working days, and 270 still being actively worked on. The real pressure is in relation to neighbourhood services, who receive about 80% of all queries. To illustrate this, they received 1,638 enquiries in the last six months. So it's about 10 jobs per day. And the practical reality is that most of these enquiries relate to highways and street scenes. So they all end, they end up with a very small number of officers who have to try and respond in addition to their normal workload. By example, some officers can have 50 plus queries to work through on top of their normal workload. And this isn't ideal or sustainable. But the issue is more of capacity than information flow, which isn't really the type of operational issues that we're set up to deal with. Also, on occasion, some of the requests take longer. Can be requests around large-scale projects or strategic issues rather than requests that the system was intended to handle, such as fly tipping potholes, fallen road signs. Some strategic issues may be better resolved by raising in forums, such as with cabinet members or group leader meetings. We've also observed that the number of enquiries that relate to issues that, while important, are not urgent or time-sensitive, but still to issues that while important are not urgent or time sensitive, but still require that five day inquiry time scale response. There are also many queries for other organisations where in reality the team simply acts as a postbox to pass on the messages such as beyond housing, the environment agency, the police or businesses. It may well be more impactful for a councillor to contact those organisations themselves. I don't know who wrote this. Rather than inquiries, inquiries being emailed via the business support team. We do have a workforce that's been continually reduced over a large number of years to make budget savings. And we don't currently have the ma- means to invest in the services that we would ideally like to. But I appreciate that doesn't really answer your question about going forward. So I think it's something Counselor Brown needs to answer in writing. Okay, thank you.
Do you need to go now?
I would love to.
Yeah, um, do you, uh, if you've got a supplementary, would you like to ask it, but it may need to be answered by in writing?
Yes, I, I appreciate that you can't answer this, Carrie. Um, and I think it's a very lame response to the question that I've asked. Um, I haven't, um, I've actually complimented Members' Enquiries. I find them very competent. Um, I do send dozens of messages because I follow the rules and we go via Member Enquiries. And they're always responsive back. And highways are one of the best responders, uh, in my mind. I sent an eighth me email on the seventeenth of September. And the, the email was for the cabinet to answer the question, not an officer. I've actually sent an email to state, to Members' Inquiry, to the M D and to the cabinet to say, the officers do not need to answer this question. It is a cabinet response I'm looking for. So if you can ha- ask him to look at that from the seventeenth of September, I would really appreciate that too. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Right, next question, uh, question one, uh, from Counselor Martin to Counselor Brooke.
I have texted you in various emails since twenty seventh of July regarding inadequate commercial refuse disposal within any real action response from yourself or the council. I run a successful business in Essendon. I have a waste management plan in place. I receive this documentation every year from BIFIR. It's a legal requirement to have a waste transfer note. I have asked for action at joint operation between various departments to check all business owners have disposed of their commer- commercial waste correctly. Far too long, businesses have been allowed just to litter everywhere. Uh, will you sanction a joint operation to challenge all businesses on their waste management policies?
Thank you, Counselor Brooke.
Yeah, thank you for your question. As you know, I am aware of this and I have had oversight of it. Um, I can confirm that relevant council officers in the bo- in both commercial sides of environmental health and waste have been and will continue to work together to engage with businesses in the Essendon area going forward. The information that I've seen to date does show that the team have gone to the relevant businesses in various locations and all have the correct waste licence in place. Um, nonetheless, officers will specifically focus on the geographical areas you have identified and will challenge businesses where necessary. Hopefully this should start seeing environmental improvement in the future. Um, and I do believe that there'll be a, a site visit arranged within the next week or two.
Counselor Martin, do you have a supplementary?
Just a quick one. Obviously, this has been going on since the twenty ninth of July. Uh, I sent you an email regarding another incident today. Uh, and on today, I was told that action is being taken and we are looking into it. So why has it took from the twenty ninth of July to today for someone to tell me that something was actually happening?
Counselor Brooke.
Yeah, I can apologise obviously the delay on my response. Obviously, I get copied into hundreds of emails each week to Members' Enquiries. Um, and I do try and keep overview and track as much as possible. Um, but the information I am getting with the officers is there, there has been multiple phone calls with yourself to try and update you. And I was under the impression that you were, that was satisfactory. So all I can do is apologise and move forward.
Uh, ca- uh, question two, again from Counselor Martin. I know he's got Counselor Richardson, but it's actually Counselor Brooke it needs to be addressed to.
Here we go again. Yeah, I'm all, sorry, question two we're on, do apologise, yeah. I'm all for having blocks of land for biodiversity. However, going in next year, can we please have a proper consultation on planned areas with residents and ward councillors? The number of complaints I've had this year from residents regarding land that has been left for biodiversity is unreal. Can we please have a plan that ensures these areas do not encroach on paths and pavements? And they are not just left to grow so that the weeds and nettles and children can play.
Counselor Brooke.
Yes, as you may know, Counselor Richardson oversees the strategy, but it's clean and green under myself that obviously manages and delivers it. Um, so there should have been consultations with ward members on all the biodiversity locations across the borough. I apologise if that did not happen. But we will look to re- re-engage with ward councillors to review arrangements for these existing areas and identify any further potential areas. As part of this, we will look to agree regular review dates so that arrangements can be amended or altered. Um, and as again, um, I believe council officers, if not already, will be in touch to arrange a site visit and further discussions.
Counselor Martin, do you have a supplementary?
Yeah, uh, sorry about this. Obviously, you've ma- mentioned there that it will be mentioned to ward councillors. But what about the residents? It's the residents who use this land. Yes, it's council owned, but the kids may play on this land. And if the residents aren't notified that this plot of land may or may not be getting used, they're not going to know until it's left. I mean, we have various, uh, ways of communication. We have the, the paper that goes through every quarter to the people's, uh, residents. We have Facebook. You could easily put on there saying there's a, there's going to be a community meeting in X Y Z to go over biodiversity in your area. If you'd like to attend, come and attend. This way, we've told the residents and they're given the opportunity to have their speak. Because obviously at present, I think we're taking land away from small communities who may not have loads of land and that's where the kids play.
Counselor Brooke.
Yeah, I to- I totally agree. Um, I do think though the first point of call is the consultation should be more on a local level from the ward councillors. Um, sometimes when we share things on the council's main social media page or in newsletters, it, it can be missed by people in that local vicinity. So I think definitely we will look at that, but it needs to be more ward member led to make sure it's getting to their residents that live in that near vicinity.
Thank you. Uh, question three, again from Counselor Martin to Counselor Brooke.
There's a massive problem in some areas. I requested covert cameras in a certain hotspot. The response from Members' Enquiries was that the council have no covert cameras. The ones we have need an electricity supply. Is this true? And if so, how are we supposed to clamp down on flytipping in semi-rural, rural locations if we don't have the equipment?
Counselor Brooke.
Yes, so the management of all C C T V, C, uh, CCTV cameras are operated by the council, has to be in line with information commissioner advice and council processes. The councils do not generally use any covert cameras as they, as, as these require ripper authorisation. In areas which cannot be covered by standard public space cameras or rapid deployment cameras, we can look to use battery operated cameras. However, these, the, these have proved successful in some cases. However, they do have to have suitable signage within the vicinity in line with guidance. Council officers, I know we discussed this earlier, I, I believe they'd already been in touch. But I believe this discussion will take place when you meet in Essendon regards to the waste issue from question one. So a further discussion will be had and we'll. Right. Which you met officers yesterday. So was the cameras CCTV not mentioned in yesterday's? Yeah. Yeah, so, yeah, so, um, that was the one I got confused with. So I'm aware that you've had that discussion. It's the other one in Essendon regards to question one, the same area for another camera. Yeah, so that discussion will take place when you have a site visit regards to waste. We'll hit two birds with one stone.
A supplementary? Ca- is that, was that your? Counselor Martin, did you have a?
Oh, sorry.
That was it. Uh, supplementary, was that your? Do you have one or not? No, okay.
Dave Taylor was supposed to ask it, but I do echo his sentiments in the, in his question. So residents in many parts of the borough, obviously he was locally targeting his own wards, but I do feel like it's appropriate everywhere else. Um, I've experienced a sharp rise in shop thefts, burglaries, antisocial behaviour. A key factor is the misuse of local housing. Flats I once reserved for all the residents, say for instance Bankfield and in my own ward on Ayton Drive in Kirkleetham, are now being used by private landlords, housing providers to provide people with complex needs, often with no consultation and no safeguarding in the community. To be clear, I and the rest of us fully support helping people rebuild their lives. But this not much be coming at the expense of safety and stability for the residents who live there. Best in the norm, be councillors have been calling for stronger controls, including selective licensing. For clarity, selective licensing means landlords in designated areas must apply for a licence before renting out a property. This enables the council to enforce proper standards, ensuring landlords are fit and proper persons and hold them accountable. If tenants and, or properties cause persistent problems, ensure it raises standards, tackles rogue landlords and protects communities from unsafe or unsuitable placements. But licensing alone isn't enough. Councillors, by their extension, the public, should be advised when properties are being purchased. By whom and for what purchase? For, for what purpose, sorry? That a level of transparency, which seems to be a common theme in the whole of this meeting today, would allow proper scrutiny and prevent oversaturation in already struggling areas, protect the high streets and safeguard the value of residents' homes. At the present, businesses are being hit with a high level of thefts, staff feeling unsafe and residents are le- are losing confidence. Across properties that aren't even boarded, that are even left boarded up when the tenants return to, to prison, your providers still be paid per month at the taxpayers' cost. This is a failure in the system. Will you commit to bringing selective licensing across high impact areas across the borough, especially in specific hotspot areas? And will you also commit a housing strategy that holds providers accountable, ensures, ensures transparency over property ownership and usage and finally puts the needs and safety of our communities first? Thank you.
Counselor Brooke.
Yeah, thank you, Counselor Grogan. So I, I've had a telephone conversation earlier in the week with, um, Counselor Taylor. So I am aware of the issues that have been raised in the local area under hous- and housing camp, their part in managing these going forward. Um, I do note that Counselor Taylor refers to flats in Bankfield, Gisborne Street, Jubilee Road and Station Road and the potential transfer of these properties into private landlord ownership. It might be appreciated that the council has no powers or jur- jurisdiction to control property sales and or who landlords put in those properties. With or without a selective licensing regime in place, even if the council wanted to control these purchasers, sales and new tenants, it does not have any powers from government to do so. For clarity, if we did bring in selective licensing regime into force, um, it would not remedy the issues that have been raised. In terms of monitoring sales or purchases, the council is never made aware itself as these are only recorded on the National Land Registry and they do not consult on transactions. I do see the issues that Counselor Taylor has raised with regard to the properties being boarded up, perhaps due to the tenants going to prison. Um, I would appreciate if he could contact the council's housing standard teams after this meeting, obviously. And officers will investigate the specifics and address, and addresses to try and remedy the issues. In terms of committing today to bring a selective licensing in areas such as N O M B E, um, that wouldn't be possible, but I would welcome further discussions with Counselor, um, Taylor and ward councillors um, and the, uh, housing standards officers for matter. However, it must be appreciated that selective licensing is not a panacea and may not be the best course of action to remedy the issues that have been raised in the first. In combination with the new local plan, a new housing strategy, which will definitely cover the issues that have been raised. And as vice chair of the Housing Strategy Fo- Forum this morning, I did add Counselor Taylor to the invite list. Opportunity to voice his, his own and residents' concerns.
Counselor Grogan, does Counselor Taylor have a supplementary?
I have one based on the answer though, but following on.
Okay, do you want to?
And obviously, I know that Counselor Taylor has been more, and he did mention that you had spoken to him early on. But it was very brief in the quick conversation because it was rather late that he decided they couldn't get here because of work commitments. So I've had to have a quick little scout around about, um, selective licensing. And Durham County Council offer, offer this out. And they actually, it actually brings in a small amount of revenue. They charge five hundred and sixty five pound per property. But when I looked at how they're doing regarding a fit and proper person's test, I can't see how, one, it would pay for itself, especially for the amount of landlords that actually, private landlords within the borough. But it would also include like, anyone that's had any fraud, any drug offences, sexual offences to be included, any unlawful breaches of housing or law, following on Dave's, um, rogue tenants, rogue landlords, sorry. But also, it's, it's a health and safety issue. We, they, they require gas safety records, the E I C R, which is the Electrical Installation Condition Report, and tenancy and current energy performance certificates. So even if we had some type of record on that, at least we know that the residents are staying in a safe house that's energy uh, requirements are okay, because obviously we're trying to cut costs for everyone. And that the right people are living there and it will bring in some small income. Maybe if we could look at Durham County Council's approach and maybe look that moving forward. Thank you.
Counselor Brooke, do you want to, can you answer that?
Yeah, so our housing standards team do have, um, experience in running selective licensing. We've ran selective licensing in Southbank for ten years, which recently ended in, um, twenty twenty three or twenty twenty four, I believe. Um, and the council is not afraid to bring in selective licensing. Um, but we, we do have to evidence a lot of things. So main, there's various factors why it could be brought in for antisocial behaviour, um, poverty. The main thing is housing standards. And there has to be a clear record and data showing category one housing standard issues reported through to the team for us to be able to evidence the implementation of selective licensing. So by all means, the council is not afraid to implement it. At the moment though, the information given by Counselor Taylor and any complaints that are coming to the team, we can't seem to justify it, so we'll have further discussions. But at this moment in time, we don't think it'll be the right course of action to remedy the problem. But we'll definitely look at action plans to go forward.
Okay, thank you everyone. That is the last of the questions. And can I thank everybody, uh, for being here this afternoon and for surviving to the end of today's session? Counsel?